Okay, we will go ahead and start moving. And when you're ready, would you take the roll?
Mrs. Bohan?
Here.
Dr. Schulman?
Here.
Mrs. Steiner?
Here.
Ms. Gorst?
Present.
Ms. Tramelli?
Here.
Mr. Yucaitis?
Here.
And Mr. Conrady?
Here.
Okay, we will go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance. Dylan, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we will move on to our consent agenda. And we have approval for regular minutes from the regular meeting held on June 14th of 2023. What is your desire?
Move to approve.
Second. In the second time. Any changes to those minutes or questions? Seeing now we'll take the vote.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Yucaitis?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes. And approval of accounts for the month of June. What is your desire?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. We will go ahead and take the roll.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Yucaitis?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Then we will move on to communications from the public. And the board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the meeting for the board to enter into a debate or discussion of an issue. Comments in regard to personnel matters are not allowed. Information presented cannot result in immediate action due to the open meetings law, but it could precipitate a future agenda item. Comments will be limited to three minutes and our board secretary will give a two-and-a-half-minute kind of heads-up. And then in three minutes, she will ask for you to close all comments. So with that in mind, I do have several people, or at least a couple of people, who've signed up and asked to make comments. And if there's anyone else besides the two that I have, we do have some slips.
At the back.
By the side of here.
And so you can fill one out and just come out the side and see that I get it and I will include it. I will start with Mary Jo Wheeler.
Good evening. My name is Mary Jo Wheeler Schuler and I'm here today to talk about hate. In my family and in our community, hate has no home. On behalf of Moms for Liberty Wood County, I would like to share with you that hate has no home in our organization either. Our main focus of Moms for Liberty is to fight for our kids and hold our school districts and schools accountable. In the last year, our major projects involved getting pocket constitution for all eighth graders in celebration of 9/17 Day. We have also sponsoring Constitution Challenge, in which we challenge each family to break apart and understand the Constitution, including their rights and civic responsibilities. At past meetings, we've had experts on a range of topics, from curriculum reform to school safety. Most importantly, we're providing a safe place for parents and teachers to talk about what's really going on in our school district and our community, working together to change it for the better. New this year, we are proud to sponsor a scholarship to be given to a liberty-minded student looking to make the world a better place. We are not crazy people or radicals. We are genuine, normal people who are strong about their schools, care strongly about their schools, and working to make it a better place for our students and our staff. I invite everyone, please, to come to our next meeting, Monday, August 7th, at the Marshfield Community Center, so you can see for yourselves that there is no room for hate in our group, only hard-working, genuine, commitment-minded people for our community. So thank you.
And next, I have Dylan Shoyer.
I brought handouts. Good evening, board members. Recently, the issue of recognizing valedictorian and salutatorian was brought before the board. My first comment on the matter is that the only rational solution is to recognize one valedictorian and one salutatorian. Any scenario in which there are tiered GPA levels or multiple recipients defeats the purpose of recognizing anyone. This is a hard-earned honor for two students, not a participation trophy. Second, President Bohan has recently alleged that in the competition for students to become valedictorian and salutatorian, they miss out on extracurricular and elective opportunities. In my personal experience, this is false. In fact, the students at the top of the class tend to be the most involved students in the school. As evidence for this point, I would like to share the extracurricular involvement of a recent Marshfield High School graduate. This student was an officer in five clubs and a member in eight more. This student managed campaigns for public office, played violin in orchestra, and gave bilingual tours of the high school. This student took 17 AP classes, 10 dual-credit classes, 12 honors classes, and 28 courses that are labeled "elective." This student took classes ranging from calculus to food science, from business and information technology to anatomy. This student participated in art and music and foreign language while playing a sport and having a job. This student had a well-rounded and rigorous course schedule and this student is frustrated with certain members of the board and their misinformation. President Bohan, Mr. Yucaitis, I support empirical, fact-based decisions. However, when your facts are from 2010, when this student was in kindergarten, or worse, 1994, a decade before this student was born, I have to question your willingness to really seek facts versus your tendency to cite hearsay that you can only substantiate with your own word. I cannot speak to what happened before I was born or what happened when I was six years old, but I can tell you that it is very possible to get a well-rounded education, learn an instrument and a language, and still end up ranked number one in the class. I strongly encourage you to seek the course schedules and extracurricular enrollment of other students in the top 5%. And I assure you that my scenario is not an isolated incident. Seek current information and the claim that academic achievement dampens a student's willingness to be well-rounded becomes less and less realistic. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You both leave on. Is there a course document? And any announcements?
No announcements, just an item for the superintendent's report. Yeah, I'm really pleased to report out on some great news that I received from our Department of Public Instruction just a couple of weeks ago. My report all relates to our Career and Tech Ed program and specifically related to a grant program referred to as the Career and Technical Education, or CTE incentive grant. The Wisconsin DPI has been collaborating for, it's probably about six, seven years now, with Wisconsin Workforce Development to try to support programming at the high school level for direct-to-career opportunities for kids. And our school district, in Marshfield High School in particular, has been a very active participant in seeking out this grant funding. So a little bit more on the award program that I'm referring to. The CTE incentive grant awards are based upon the number of students who earn certifications in youth apprenticeship and other work-based learning programs. It provides school districts up to $1,000 per student for completion of state-approved certificates. The program has been very successful and typically gets more requests from school districts than the $1,000 per student available. This year, there were enough claims submitted by school districts that the grant funding ended up coming in at $705.44 per student. So the current awards that were announced just two weeks ago are based upon, it's a year removed, so this is a year ago, our graduating class of 2022. So based on the participation from our Marshfield High School graduating class of 2022, we have 150 students successfully earned more than 200 certifications in various fields of career and technical education. Both of these numbers are new, all-time highs for Marshfield High School. As a result, the school district will be receiving over $105,000 in grant funding from this incentive grant to support our programming at the school. The data is pretty fresh, so we don't have comparisons, but just for past years, we typically rank in the top 10 high schools, school districts, excuse me, in the state of Wisconsin. It's a school district recognition, even though it comes from your high school population. The only school districts that beat us are those that have multiple high schools, places like Green Bay, that have three or four high schools to R1, each of which is larger than our approximate 1,200 students. And yet, we have roughly half of our graduating seniors earning industry-recognized certifications. I just think that that is an outstanding accolade. And as wonderful as that accolade is in garnering grant funding to help support our CTE program, our students have earned extremely valuable work experiences in career areas within our community that are facing workforce shortages. This is everything from healthcare, childcare, nursing, automotive, information technology, agriculture, and manufacturing, just to mention a few. Our students are participating in all kinds of different career fields that earn these certifications. So we're especially happy to know that this grant funding goes back directly in helping support these activities, things such as MHS Career Explorer, world-to-work field trips for students and staff, professional development for our CTE teachers, and the acquisition of equipment and supplies that will help the school district continue to provide additional industry-recognized certifications for future Marshfield students. So again, I think that that is great news. We're at the top of the state and this year, we have even better numbers. Again, all-time new highs for our high schools. So I think that's great for our CTE program and great for our kids and great for our business community all the way around in our community. Good news. Thank you.
It's not only good news that as board member, I just wanted to congratulate. Oh, it's not on. Okay. Sorry. As a board member, I just want to congratulate our students too because we do have a very special student body and I recognize that. And so it's kind of the "out here" type feeling that as a board member. So thank you for your interest.
Our CTE committee, Fire Number, is one of the best. They are. They truly are.
We will move on to gifts and donations and we have a nice list of donations to accept. For Grant Elementary, $3,500 from the PTO for playground equipment; $125.86 from the PTO for field trip busing; For Madison Elementary, $150 from the PTO for the sixth-grade track day; For Washington Elementary, $350 from the PTO for sixth-grade track day; And then for the boys' basketball program, $200 for Mittens Furniture Appliance Electronics; $1,000 for Marshfield Convention and Visitors Bureau; $250 from Easy Clit Mantles LLC, doing business as I supply; For the boys' golf program, $1,000 from Terry Franklin for golf bags; For the softball program, $1,202.48 for Coach Bus upgrades; And for the FFA program, $6,658 from the Marshfield FFA alumni; And $500 from Chelley Implement. What is the board's desire regarding these?
To accept the great tax.
Thank you. And we have a second.
Second.
And we will take the roll.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Ms. Yucaitis?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
We will move on to committee reports and curriculum instruction did not meet this month. So we will go to facility safety and transportation. Mr. Conrady?
All right. Start off with, we had some discussion about pickleball courts. And with the public always asking me, I am not a professional. I don't know that much about pickleball, but I am learning. So with that, the second serve campaign has been successful with fundraising, the dollar amount needed to complete the project. Statistic plans to move forward with the project. You will be hearing more of this coming from finance here very shortly. So with that, then we talked about the long-range facility planning. A debriefing session was held with the community planning committee to gather feedback regarding the process and approach used for the latest facility referendum. Overall, the group liked working with Bray Associates on the needs assessment, appreciated input received from staff, and the opportunity for building tours. Elements identified by the group as to why the referendum may not have been successful included better prioritized needs assessment, better communication plans, as to how the list of prioritized needs was developed. The group is interested in engaging with Novoors to try to get a sense of what type of plan would be supported going forward. So and then with the next steps coming from the committee, continue to study facility needs using a different approach and expanding the community committee. Members of the facilities committee consented to move forward with issuing a request for a proposal. So with that, I have an action item to approve, a request for proposal for facilities planning services to assist with long-range facility planning action. Or planning. So what that means is we're gonna, we'd like to put this back up for quotes. Bray and Associates can quote it and other firms can quote it. And hopefully bring in another set of eyes or grades with a different outlook to what we're doing here and looking at our future here. So that is what I have for a motion. So brought in by committee.
So we have a motion on behalf of committee to allow them to proceed with the request for proposals for facility planning services. Is there any discussion, questions for Mr. Conrady? Is there a cost associated with the RFP?
There is. Yes.
Yeah. So we currently have $20,000 budgeted in the fiscal year '24 budget. That would be one of the items that would be included in the request for proposal that is sent out is asking what a fee structure would look like from groups that would be interested in working with the district on the planning.
Okay. So the issuance of the RFP doesn't cost us any money, but it would cost us to have somebody come in and do it?
If we do end up having a proposal that we're to approve. And that is, we did talk in committee a little bit about how that process would work. There's no cost other than advertisement because this is typically advertised in the media. So there would be advertisement costs. I think when we looked at it previously, Sam, I think, was around $600 in advertisement costs when we did this previously. But beyond that, then, we take the proposals that come in. We review them. And last time we went through this process, the committee did do interviews with the, we narrowed the proposals down to three groups and the three groups did an in-person meeting to review their proposal and take questions from committee members. And the committee did bring forward a recommendation to the board. That proposal includes what the cost would involve and that would be an action item for the board to add the requested cost for the services.
Any other questions?
I just want to clarify that what they're doing in their proposal is not giving sort of a broad sweep estimate. It's just.
It's specific.
It is. In their RFP. Okay, so we will be getting from three people, or possibly three, company or more, their broad look at what is, what the needs are that they, because they've got documents out there. And they might give a broad estimate of what this cost might be.
Well, then.
They give, that's part of the request for proposal.
And that will get narrowed down later.
Right, we'll get narrowed down later. But when we do offer them, but we do have that opportunity to just get the idea of whether a different set of eyes is kind of viewing this whole project differently after those proposals come in. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, and we will take the motion to approve the RFP for facility planning services.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Yucaitis?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Any things?
No, that is all we have.
Can I interrupt for just a moment? I think out of courtesy, we should probably introduce our new business director to the people. We haven't done that really.
And since we're at the beginning of the finance committee, we might waste some good time.
You can.
Sam's loving this opportunity. We put on the spot. But what Mr. Yucaitis is referring to is that we do have a newly hired, hired actually back earlier in the year, but starting effective with July, a new Director of Business Services, who is Sam Lehman, Samuel Lehman. Sam, if you want to just kind of wave to the group sitting over at the side. We're really appreciative and excited to have you onboard and would like to welcome you onboard to work with us here in the district. You've been on for a couple of weeks now, but this is your first official board meeting, so welcome.
Right here.
Thank you. And now we will turn it over to Dr. Chelton for the report for the finance.
Excellent. I'm apologizing in advance because my committees are about 80% of the action items tonight. So starting with finance. We had a pretty busy finance. We've got several items for approval brought out of committee. First one, we spoke about the supplemental pay. Annually, the board takes, discusses supplemental pay for credentialing for the professional teaching staff. And this year, it was determined that we had about $28,000 and $29,000 to spend on the credentialing pay. This is supplemental income for the teachers, spread across, you know, for all the teachers who are in good standing, basically keeping up to speed with all of their job requirements. And it turns out to be about a 0.2% pay increase, averaging about $104 per FTE of the teachers. We have discretion over this every year. It's been something that we try to do every year in support of our teacher staff. And the committee recommends approval of this resolution for supplemental pay for credentialing for members of the school district of Marshfield professional staff.
So there is a more detailed resolution that's an attachment within the agenda. So it's kind of long, but you've heard the summary from Dr. Schulman. And any questions for her or discussion about that resolution for supplemental pay for the instructional staff?
This is non-base wage increase. This is.
And just a comment that this is reviewed every year and we decide whether we're going to do it every year. So this is not something that is automatic. Correct.
Hopefully at the discretion of the board.
Anything else? Then we will go ahead and take the roll.
Mr. Yucaitis?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Okay, we will move on.
Is it okay to take C and D together as one action item?
As long as no one objects on board.
I'll explain what they are. These are, we're going to ask approval for resolutions for one-time stipends as well for the all regular, full-time and part-time, 12-month and 10-month support staff, professional employee and professional employees of the district. ESR funds need to be spent by next September 2024. Part of the budgeting of that allowed us to offer stipends to our employees over the next school year. There, we broke it down into, there, we have 10-month employees for general support staff and year-round employees, including the professional staff and some 12-month support staff employees as well. So the stipends are a little bit different depending on whether they are 10-month or 12-month. The 12-month employees will be offered a stipend of $2,000 per full FTE. It will be prorated to all part-timers. The 10-month staff are based on $1,600 stipend. This is again, a non-base wage adding one-time-only stipend that's being offered. It's being paid out in four increments throughout the year. Breaking it up into four payments helps diffuse the tax burden across two different tax shares. It helps with encouraging retention of staff through the whole year in order to recruit the entire stipend. Again, with recruiting as well. And it really is meant as an augmentation to the wages. Because the CPI was so high this year, we're looking for ways to help offset some of that cost of living. And spreading this out over the year helps supplement the income maybe right when they would be looking to need it. So the part C is for the 12-month employees and part D is for the 10-month employees. They're essentially the same resolution. The number values are different. The 12 months are $2,000 per FTE. The 10 months are $1,600 per FTE. And in fact, we are offering these for approval with one caveat that under the first section, part B of each resolution, it reads, "The stipend shall be paid out in equal installments of $500 or of $400 four times a year." We are also amending the motion to take out the word, to take out the piece of $500 or of $400 to cover the fact that it's going to be prorated for part-time employees. We didn't want to lock that in at a set rate, even though it is outlined that it will be prorated. Just to be consistent between A and B, we'd like to take out the dollar. So it will read, "The stipend shall be paid in equal installments four times during the following 2023-2024 payrolls." So if, is it okay that we vote on it together or do you guys want me to take these separately?
I'd rather have them separate.
Okay.
Since they're both listed as separate action items.
All right. So on behalf of committee, I bring forward the resolution for one-time stipends for school district of Marshville professional and twelve-month employees for approval.
So we have the motion on behalf of committee. Are there any other questions or comments?
Just a comment that this is a one-time thing and it specifies that.
And I might add to that, that when the legislature did the biennial budget for last year and this year with no increase per pupil, they pointed out that we had Esser funding to use to fill that gap. So this is in line with that intention also. And anything else? And so it's something that makes it, because it's one-time, it's not that we have to sustain it year after year.
That's the same comment when we get to item D as well.
Correct.
Absolutely.
Any other comments or questions? Then we will go ahead and take the vote on approval of the resolution for one-time stipend for professional staff and twelve-month support staff or twelve-month staff.
Okay, Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Giacchides?
Yes.
I would like to report on behalf of finance committee, approve, we recommend approval of the resolution for one-time stipend for school district of Marshville, ten-month support staff employees.
Any questions about that happen? See now, we will go ahead and take the vote.
Okay, Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Giacchides?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Okay, so the next one is approval of resolution for updates to the district 403B and the 457 plans. Every few years, company is engaged to review the retirement tax sheltered annuity plans of the staff. Van Breezen and Roper reviewed the current plans thoroughly. There were multiple minor changes made to the details in both plans. A lot of them were syntax, structure, minor changes. And any statements that were thrown in were added to add clarity or more specificity to the rights of the participant, the plan participants. There really was no ceiling change in either plan. And after review, the committee is bringing it forward for approval.
So we have a motion on behalf of committee to approve the resolution for the updates to the district 403B and 457 plans. Any questions about those?
I believe also this was reviewed by the attorneys to make sure that we're in compliance with any changes in federal law.
And they specialize in benefits.
They specialize in benefits.
Anything else? Okay, then we will take the vote.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Giacchides?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Okay, next is Marshfield schools getting a new pickleball court and tennis court improvement project. This has been discussed. There is a community group that is actively fundraising and has fundraised a lot of the cost of building the pickleball court and helping resurface and improve the tennis court area. The first item for approval is basically approving the agreement for the construction that we will move ahead with the construction of the Marshfield High School pickleball court and tennis court improvement projects. We are contracting with Bozen to do this work. And should I explain all the finances in this one?
The next one.
The next one.
The first one is just approving that the project is to go forward and the next one is the funding.
The intent is to see if we have approval on a project before we decide whether we have the financing or not.
All right, so on behalf of committee, we recommend approval of the agreement between the owner and the contractor to build the Marshville pickleball, Marshville High School pickleball court.
So that is a motion from committee. Any discussion or questions about that agreement to go forward with the project?
Just quickly, I've been asked about some of the things that have been built under the athletic funding situation that we have. And note that this is another situation where an outside group has decided to come forward to fund this project. There will be some, as in the next action item, there will be some bridge funding that the district will be allowed, will be providing to help facilitate that building. But this is another group from the outside that has decided to build or asked to build the pickleball courts. And district is happy to have it.
And the second serve committee has really, first with the tennis courts some years ago, really added value not just for our students, but for the community with those courts. And this is in the same vein of wanting to add value to both the students' lives and the community at large. So it's an outside fundraising group.
Yeah, the project is approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of work and the district's contribution is fifty thousand. So that's an eight to one privately funded. And the fifty thousand dollar allotment that the school district has budgeted was money that we were planning to, part of this is resurfacing the existing tennis courts, which was a facility improvement need we had already and actually it cost more than fifty thousand. So they're actually helping us pay for the resurfacing of the tennis courts on top of the new infrastructure that will be going into place.
And the Bozen family headed up a lot of the fundraising, both chapters also.
And just my other, pickleball used to be, I thought, sort of an older person sport, but that is so not true that there's now, you've, okay, yeah, we got, we got some here in the room that are really enjoying pickleball. And so it's, I think this will be something wonderful, could be added to, you know, the FIAID or just having it available nearby. If someone wants to teach me the rules, I am totally lost, so.
Mark and I will promise to come play at the dedication.
That's her.
I think some other, some other highlights that is one of the main ones is having a permanent bathroom facility at the tennis complex, which we have not had since it was built. So it would be nice to have that. And just from a timeline standpoint, our intent is to get the resurfacing of the tennis courts done in time for the fall season that's coming up. We all know the game and we work on the challenge, so they're, we're keeping our fingers crossed and being able to meet that. But as far as groundbreaking on the additions, specifically pickleball court installation, the parking lot, bathroom facilities, things of that nature, it could be as early as the end of the month of July that they would start working on that and hopefully have the project done before the snow flies, keeping our fingers crossed.
And to the bathroom work, as you talk in the restroom area, that had been looked at already a couple of years ago when they started building the apartments back there and they come in with the road. Buildings and ground and our director, Aaron, looked at it, said, hey, let's get the plumbing and the water mains and everything brought in so that that stuff is in there while the city's building road. So that stuff was all pre-planned, got put in, so moving forward, it's going to help putting the restrooms and everything in and keeping the costs down.
We gotta give Ron the credit on that one.
Ron Stravsky, yeah.
Good job, Ron.
But that just goes to show you the pre-planning that is done throughout the whole school district as we see things and working with the city.
Anything else? Then we will go ahead and take the vote.
Okay. Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Giacchides?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes, providing I don't have to play the first game.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
And Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Okay, now that we've approved the project, we're going to help them get it started. We know how it's going to be paid for. As Ms. Bohan had alluded to, the community foundation, specifically the pickleball fund, the second serve group, has already done a big enough job of fundraising. They've already raised over two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Our fifty thousand is, contribution is already part of that. They also have commitments of about a hundred and sixty-four thousand for future years. Donations are all going to be, should be recouped by December of 2025. But if we want to move forward and we need to get some upfront funding to get going, they still need to fill in about a hundred and ninety-six to two hundred thousand dollar gap right now between what has been raised and the current cost estimated of about four hundred and forty-two thousand. It was recommended that, we recommend that we set aside two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from unassigned fund balance to an assigned, to earmark it for this project. In the general fund, we do have the dollars to cover this without, to allow this for a short-term bridge loan, bridge payment, so we can get started. And it's two hundred and fifty thousand, so the total's going to be closer to five hundred thousand just to allow a little bit of, like a fifty thousand dollar buffer sort of for either cost overruns or to keep, to be used and set aside in the future for future updates or maintenance, other cost sharing needs that may come up between the second serve and the school district. Given that we fully anticipate that bridge payment is going to be reimbursed over the next two, two and a half years, the committee feels comfortable asking for approval for the, the bridge payment to cover construction costs for the Marshfield High School pickleball courts and tennis court improvements.
So we have a motion on behalf of committee for the bridge funding in, by doing a reallocation of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of unassigned fund balance to assigned fund balance for purposes of the bridge financing, the construction costs of the Marshfield High School pickleball courts and tennis court improvements. Any questions for the committee?
And I think it bears repeating your last comments that this money will be repaid to the school district.
Over a couple of years.
I'd like to add just maybe a little bit more detail to that. The reason being was driving this is people, we have a number of people in groups that are pledging donations, are looking to spread those payments out over a three-year period. So if you imagine somebody pledging sixty thousand dollars, they want to pay twenty thousand now, twenty thousand next year and twenty thousand in, you know, the third year after that. That's why the district is looking to bridge the financing on this. So we get the project done now and get reimbursed over the next couple of years as those pledges continue to come in.
And they've already been pledged four hundred and seven thousand dollars and they intend to continue and hopefully overfundraise, so there also is that buffer in the long run to help with future needs.
Because at this point in time, the fundraising has been a quiet campaign. They haven't really gone, you know, very public with this and they've done very well. So their goal is to exceed the amount and have some additional funding that will stay at the community foundation to be available down in the future for additional maintenance, needs that may come up down the road.
Anything else? Okay, then we will go ahead and take the vote.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Giacchides?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
And although that was it for the action items, we did talk about a budget update now that the governor has signed the biennial budget. Couple of good points came through with that. Because the budget has earmarked extra dollars for mental health services to the tune of about thirty-one dollars per student, which for our district means about a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars kind of for the school district. We are able to reinstate an interventionist position at Grant School to help. So that's a very positive outcome indeed. There were some adjustments to the budget that we will be seeing over time. The retention pond bids came in a little over what we had expected. So that will be adjusted in the budget by about twenty-one thousand dollars, but needs to be done. Apparently it's underway, so. There are, and due to the significant increase in the tuition voucher costs, there, it's not going to affect cash or expenditures, but that may play into the tax levy issue going forward through no fault of our own. It's cool about tuition voucher costs, but there'll be more of that when we come down to the final budget. And there are three scoreboards at the high school that need to be replaced because we can no longer get parts for them. We have four scoreboards, we're going to keep the three that we replace for spare parts for the fourth one in the new gym. So because that was ruled under the referendum for the improvements, it's now coming back into the budget, so it's about thirty-eight thousand dollars to replace the scoreboard that are no longer working. And then we reviewed the budget variance over the whole year and it came in. I was a little disappointed, we were off by zero point six four percent, but that was under budget.
Well, we can always improve.
We were under budget.
I do always improve.
We could improve.
To the block.
To the block. I'm looking to get a little more.
It's actually amazing.
Sam has promised to do that.
We're pretty smart on the budget, it's crazy. And that was the end of finance.
Okay, and just by way of explanation, we were talking about the voucher increases from the state legislature in the biennial budget. For people that don't realize it, that when you see your tax bill, it gets taxed for the Marshfield School District and then we pass the money along to private schools. So not all that money comes just for the school, our school district, public school district, that the portion for vouchers comes out of our budget then to be passed on to the private schools. And over the years, I, we started out like at seventy-five thousand or something, a hundred million something. And that this increase, it will be a steep increase in how much money comes out of the taxes that we get and pass along to the private schools.
And it is not a line item on the tax bill.
Right, and so you don't see that, that's why I'm explaining, you don't see that on your tax bill. You see it as coming to the public school district, but it goes from us back out to the private schools the way the state has set up.
What was it this past year? What was the, what was the amount that went out for vouchers?
One point three.
That's right. Yeah, one point three million.
Something about, just over one point three is my memory, so don't.
When it was like just over a hundred thousand about eight years ago.
I think we started out at eighty-five.
Yeah, you know, just to do a quick review on the numbers, when you had mentioned Francis, this started in sixteen, twenty sixteen seventeen and the initial year was just, was about fifty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. So just short of sixty thousand dollars when this started in sixteen seventeen. You know, last year, Marshfield School District property taxpayers were levied for one point one six million dollars for the private voucher program and were, excuse me, one point three million. That was last year, it was one point three million. And we are projecting a steep increase. We're projecting that to go up about more than double. I mean, we're talking about three million dollars is projected to be levied on local taxpayers for the private voucher program in the Marshfield area next year's tax bills.
And that's because the biennial budget from the state, it hasn't, not just the, well, we've already been paying another thousand per pupil plus if there are more pupils. Yes, so a lot of that has.
And is there a differential in how much per pupil payment the vouchers are for versus what we are giving?
Yes. I mean, that's seven hundred dollars more for students.
The increase that they receive per pupil is significantly greater than what the public schools, the two twenty-five that the public schools got.
That's what I wanted to call it.
It's about a thousand dollar per pupil on the high school side versus three fifty for public school.
And that's important for everybody knowing the published and all too, because with that, at our three hundred, we still have to pay for all the busing, everything else. Plus we got all the special education, you know, they're not required to do any of that, but they're going to get a lot more.
And we're pointing this out only so that the public understands the finances of it and the way it's billed on the tax bill. Because there'd be absolutely no need to even talk about this if they were two separate line items on the tax bill.
And you can see where it just all comes, it looks like it's for the public schools.
A big portion of it goes to the private schools.
And if we could, I just want to bounce back and correct because I was doing some quick head counting and trying to review through my documents at the same time that we're talking to, because I want to be clear and accurate. We're projecting the new amount in total to be one million, seven hundred thirty-two thousand, eight hundred ninety-five. So the overall this next year is anticipated to go up to and be at about one point seven million. Yeah, the projected increase for the upcoming year is over four hundred thousand. So I just want to be clear on my numbers. I was looking at different parts of the report here and adding the wrong numbers in my head on the fly. Last year, the tax levy for local taxpayers was one point three million and we're projecting it to be over one point seven million this next year.
And is that because of private vouchers? More private vouchers or the increased cost per voucher?
The amount went up and we project based upon growth in the program that has happened, we do project an anticipated increase in the number of students that will be funded. So it's both, more students and more funding for student allocated based on the recent change in the law.
Anything else from finance? Okay, then we will move on to the board's questions. Mr. Yucitis?
Okay, we did meet. We discussed the professional staff alternative compensation methods that will be an action item for today. We've got some staffing updates overall in terms of how things are going, filling positions and so on for the upcoming school year, and that's proceeding along nicely. The interventionist specialist position, as we've been mentioned before, will be reinstated at Grant School. Registration numbers are being finalized for kindergarten and the numbers are a little lower this year, but that remains to be seen because sometimes there are others that come in still over the course of the summer. HR and building administration will be working on filling a few positions due to unexpected resignations over the last couple of weeks. Unexpected sounds kind of bad, but it just people have decided to resign at a later date, not necessarily because there's a bad situation. We talked about the support staff wage increases and proposed compensation. We'll talk about that. That rate will be at a 3.2% increase. And then we also had a closed session to discuss total base wage proposals for administrators and district level staff. Now, going back to the original agenda, if I can find my way, first item for me will be on behalf of our committee, the approval of 2023-2024 bargaining agreement between the board and professional staff. That's an action item.
So we have a motion on behalf of committee to approve the bargaining agreement with professional staff and the board for next year, 2023 to 2024. Any questions? You have that proposal as an attachment.
We didn't.
There's an attachment.
So no attachment.
The tentative agreement that the board committee reached with MTA is for a 3% increase on base wages. And the distribution of that to be 3% of the individual teacher's base figure for each teaching.
Any questions or comments regarding that? Seeing none, we will take the floor.
Mr. Tramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Next item is the approval. This is an action item on behalf of our committee, approval of professional staff 2023-24 alternative compensation methods. And that's being brought forth by our committee.
And so any questions regarding the alternative compensation plan for next year? Okay, seeing none, we will go ahead and take the floor.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
It also follows at that point, once it the bargaining or the work with the professional staff, the teachers staff union, by the way, takes place, which we just approved, is also the approval of professional staff. Did I just say that? Alternative. I'm on the support staff one letter. The approval of wage increases for the support staff for 2023-24. That usually happens in conjunction when the teaching staff pay is established.
So we have a motion on behalf of committee to approve the wage increases for the support staff for 2023 to 2024. Any questions or?
I would just reemphasize and note that the overall increase, the proposal before the board, is for a 3.2% wage increase for support staff. The teacher group, the negotiated base wage increase was 3.0. The credentialing that was approved in finance equates to about 8.2%. So total 3.2% is about what is going to individual teachers between base and supplemental for returning wages. So we have a group proposal for support staff that falls in line with the teacher group at a total 3.2%.
Anything else?
I just wanted to refer back to the finance action items that we had, the two that were offering a one-time compensation for staff. And we were talking about this, that we put those together into the total package for next year. It brings it to about a 7% increase for next year.
If you include the one time.
Include the one-time compensation package.
Anything else? Then we will go ahead and take the floor.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes. Finally, approval of wage increases for administrative and district level staff. That includes our principals, assistant principals and so on, and district level administration. And that is also an action item. And I move to approve those wage increases for administrative and district level staff.
So we have that motion on behalf of committee to approve the wage increases for administrative and district level staff. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and take the floor.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
No.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
I'm done for now.
Then we will move on to policy and legislation. Mrs. Steiner?
Okay. And so we met on June 28th and we were doing a second reading of the items that we had on our first for first reading last month. So those have now been approved and brought forth to the board after a second reading for approval. So I'm just going to go through those. And there's so the first item is just it's a package of definitions for the terms, new definitions that have been added for the terms legal notice and official newspaper as those terms have been referenced in various policies and distributions recommended. So that's one. Can we just go ahead and do the action?
Sure.
Okay, so I'd like to bring that forth from the committee for approval by the board.
Policy. On behalf of committee, we have a motion to approve 0100, which is definitions in the policy. Any questions or comments about that? We will go ahead and take the floor.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Okay, our next item is item C, approval of policy number 0175, association membership. So this came about because of a 2022 action by the National School Board Association that was it was a letter that was written to President Biden and it was considered to be out of line for the national board to do that without consenting with the state associations. And I, as I read today, some 30 state associations have removed their membership from that. It was basically asking the federal government to assist with protests at school board meetings and calling that domestic terrorism. And that's, well, I mean, multiple school board associations have stayed disagreed with that. Everyone has a right to its free speech and it should be allowed and we don't need federal assistance to control that. So that was felt to be rather out of line. So what has happened in the subsequent years is that there are other, well, subsequent, not even year actually, that there are other associations forming to offer us an alternative when there was sort of, you know, kind of a vote of no confidence for the current national association. So this is a change of policy to allow us the latitude to join another association.
Okay.
So I'm bringing that forth for board approval from the committee.
Okay. Any questions regarding that?
I guess I would just add that the district, the board has chosen not to affiliate with a national group, but if a future board were to, based on the policy, there's an additional option and choice.
I'll give that latitude, yeah.
Anything else? And we will go ahead and take the floor.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
No.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
So the next item is item F, which is for approval of policy number 2221, which is special observance days. And that, I was sort of surprised that we didn't have, sorry, but it's revised, this policy's been revised to align with the current state law that specifies that September 11th as a special observance day as well as certain provisions for Arbor Day. So I'm bringing that forth from the committee for approval by the board.
Okay. So we have the motion on behalf of committee to approve 2221 about special observance days to bring it in line with the state. Okay, any questions?
Yeah, I knew. I went through this list and I wish I'd went through it a little finer before tonight. But I, you know, I go through this list and I don't see December 7th in here. And I really irritate the heck out of me.
Did you see it in the list of observances and patriotic observances? Did you see it at the end?
I seen patriotic observances, but I didn't see nothing for December 7th. I understand patriotic.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, I just wanted to check and see.
I'm just, I guess I don't need to add enough for the future. I would like to have that possibly come back in the future.
So we can.
And, you know.
Yeah, we can add additional ones, Mark. Certainly the listing here was updated to coincide with what's specifically delineated in state statute.
Yeah, with the governor. That was prejudiced that the governor actually said less.
It's extensive list. I was surprised by how many we have. But, yeah, I agree with you on this. That does make sense to have.
I think I could go, I mean, a person could go on and on and on. But, thank you.
Sure.
Actually, this isn't a list made by the governor. It's a list that's in the statute. So we have to make sure that we conform to the statute.
At least these ones, but we could add others to our district if we want.
This is a minimum. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a minimum requirement, so we can certainly add something if we want. So we can bring that up in policy.
Okay.
Like an action. I mean, yeah. So a future, yes, a future. I'm so.
Anything else before we vote? Then we will go ahead and take the floor.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Okay. The next item G is a, it's a, it's four policies brought together because the language is identical about the use of tobacco and nicotine by staff, students and on school premises. So each of those items deals with a particular group or place. So I would like to bring that forward. It just basically is revising this specifically prohibiting non-smoke, prohibiting smoking as intended in reference to marijuana and hemp derivatives within the context of smoking. This provides the district more authority to control the use of these partially legal products that are nonetheless mood altering substances that impact students in our school. So I'm bringing that, those four policies, 3215, 4215, policy 5512, policy 7434 before the board on behalf of the committee for approval.
Thank you. So we have the motion on behalf of committee to approve the four policies that deal with use of tobacco and nicotine. Any questions regarding that? Any comments? Seeing none, we will take the floor.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Mr. Mont?
Yes.
Next is item H, which is approval of policy 5200 on attendance. And we needed to do some changes to this, incorporating the definitions of key terms for both purposes of, for both purposes of this policy, which these definitions are required in order to enforce truancy requirements and potentially to enforce open enrollment termination provisions in the context of habitual truancy. So we just need to make sure we have that available to us and the volumes need to be changed. And it was, this is strongly recommended by our advisors on our, from the OLA, that we do approve this. It gives us good protection.
So we have a motion on behalf of committee to approve policy 5200 regarding attendance. Any questions regarding that? Comments? And we will take the floor.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Mr. Tramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
No.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
And this is also recommended that we, for approval, to be consistent with the current practices in our school. So on behalf of the committee, I'm bringing forth policy 5330, administration of medication and emergency care, for approval by the board.
Thank you. So we have motion to approve policy 5330 regarding administration of medicine and emergency care. Any questions or comments?
Tiny note on page two, where we had gone through this policy and put parent slash guardian?
Oh, yeah.
Or missing a guardian.
Both.
Both the parents, both the students' parents and practitioner. But maybe it should be both the parents, students, with and with and practitioner, second page.
Second page, okay.
The bottom of the green.
Of the green, okay. I'll just, both, both the students' parents.
Parents.
Guardians. Guardians and practitioner. Did you get that, Jim?
No. Okay. I've got it here, so, bottom of the page.
Page two, top of the page, green. Top of the page in the green highlight of page two.
I think just the knowing with that small...
It's more...
It just got missed because we actually addressed that in the...
Right.
Okay.
So that resonates in line with what the committee intended.
And what, yes, that's right.
So it's an editorial.
Thank you, Karen.
So did that editorial change in mind? We will go ahead and take the floor.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Eukaitis?
Yes.
Mr. Canardi?
Yes.
There, we're over half time.
Okay. So, I can start singing it, something to change the melody of my voice, I protest. So next, item J is the approval of 5517, the student anti-harassment policy. And so this also was revised again for consistency with the laws and regulations regarding student anti-harassment. So I bring it forth from the committee for the board to approve.
So we have the motion on behalf of committee to approve policy 5517 on student anti-harassment. Any questions or comments about that? Seeing that, we'll take the floor.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Eukaitis?
Yes.
Mr. Canardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Eukaitis?
Yes.
Mr. Canardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Eukaitis?
Yes.
Mr. Canardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Okay. The next item G is a, it's a, it's four policies brought together because the language is identical about the use of tobacco and nicotine by staff, students, and on school premises. So each of those items deals with a particular group or place. So I would like to bring that forward. It just basically is revising this, specifically prohibiting non-smoke, prohibiting smoking as intended in reference to marijuana and hemp derivatives within the context of smoking. This provides the district more authority to control the use of these partially legal products that are nonetheless mood-altering substances that impact students in our school. So I'm bringing that, those four policies, 3215, 4215, policy 5512, policy 7434, before the board on behalf of the committee for approval.
Thank you. So we have the motion on behalf of committee to approve the four policies that deal with use of tobacco and nicotine. Any questions regarding that and any comments? Seeing that, we will take the floor.
Mr. Eukaitis?
Yes.
Mr. Canardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Next is item H, which is approval of policy 5200, attendance. And we needed to do some changes to this, incorporating the definitions of key terms for both purposes, for both purposes of this policy, which these definitions are required in order to enforce truancy requirements and potentially to enforce open enrollment termination provisions in the context of individual truancy. So we just need to make sure we have that available to us, and that needs to be changed. And it was, this is strongly recommended by our advisors on our, from the OLA, that we do approve this. It gives us good protection.
So we have a motion on behalf of committee to approve policy 5200 regarding attendance. Any questions regarding that? Comments? And we will take the floor.
Mr. Canardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Eukaitis?
Yes.
Mr. Canardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Eukaitis?
Yes.
Mr. Canardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Eukaitis?
Yes.
Mr. Canardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Eukaitis?
Yes.
Mr. Canardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Anything else? Mrs. Steiner?
No. I am done. Then we will move on to new business, and we will start with approval of retirements and retirements.
So then we will move on to resignations. And Mr. Collins, as employees' equations chair, would you like to take the lead on that?
These approvals will need a second as I put them forward as a motion from an individual board member. That's to approve the resignations of Jeff Bell, teacher of physical education at the high school; Austin Haslow or Haslow, custodian second shift at Lincoln; Allison Kunnert, a teacher of music at Grant; and Brant Ritter, a teacher of alternative education at the alternative school. That will need those to need a second.
Second. So do we have a second?
Yes.
Kathy, thank you. So we have a motion in a second to approve these four resignations. Any questions or comments? We will take the floor.
Mr. Canardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Anything else? Mrs. Steiner?
No. I am done. Then we will move on to new business, and we will start with approval of retirements and retirements.
So then we will move on to resignations. And Mr. Collins, as employees' equations chair, would you like to take the lead on that?
These approvals will need a second as I put them forward as a motion from an individual board member. That's to approve the resignations of Jeff Bell, teacher of physical education at the high school; Austin Haslow or Haslow, custodian second shift at Lincoln; Allison Kunnert, a teacher of music at Grant; and Brant Ritter, a teacher of alternative education at the alternative school. That will need those to need a second.
Second. So do we have a second?
Yes.
Kathy, thank you. So we have a motion in a second to approve these four resignations. Any questions or comments? We will take the floor.
Mr. Canardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Eukaitis?
Yes.
And we move on to employment of new personnel. Same thing. As an individual board member, I put forth the employment of new personnel as follows, and this, this will need a second as well. Paige Higgins, the athletic trainer for the district of Marshfield; Abigail Schulteis, teacher of instrumental orchestra at Middle Elitry; and Leah Whipperfirst, I like that name, Whipperfirst, school council at the high school.
So we are, we need a second on that motion. Second, thank you.
I heard two voices. Karen.
Karen.
Thank you.
So we have a motion to approve the three new hires for new employment. And any questions or comments about that?
I just want to make note that we had some rumors that were flying around the community about eliminating orchestra at the middle school, and that was a rumor. It was false. As indicated here, we are hiring an instrumental teacher. So we can dispel all that false information by looking at our employer.
Anything else? And we'll go ahead and take the floor.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
No.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Eukaitis?
Whipperfirst.
Mr. Canardi?
Yes. Whipperfirst.
Okay, we will move on to what we have to do on an annual basis, which is make the declaration in parent notice of the district's student academic standards that will be in effect for the 2023 to 2024 school year, and this is pursuant to state statute, section 120.12, 13, and section 118.30, 1G and A1. So I need a motion?
Motion.
We definitely...
It's just a post.
So is there any discussion or comment regarding this letting the public know that we are, we have the state, we have our standard, it's always on the website, et cetera? And if anybody needs help finding those, we, anybody on board or central office?
Can I ask a question? Because I just tried to go on, I clicked the website documents, and it's taking me to my email.
It seems to be tied to your email.
It seems to be tied to our email.
What is?
The document.
Yes.
Yeah.
The folder, it was directing me to a folder when I uploaded that link, something must have happened at the time.
Okay, so they should probably, yeah, get that corrected.
We looked at that question.
And that's off of your board docs that you're referring to. I guess I'll just add, especially for our audience and people watching via video, that the, the two quickest ways, if you go to our, you know, to get access to our standards and curriculum on our school district website, you go to our main slash page or our launch page, the very upper right-hand corner, there's a tab titled Academics. Alternatively, middle and slightly off to the right in the gray area, there's a Families tab. You click on the Families tab, you'll get to the same location that, you know, from there, you've got a page that, the banner along the left side says Curriculum/Academy Standards, and they're all, from there, it'll take you to the full listing that we have for the school, for the school district.
There's also a quick link on the right that says Academic Standards.
Correct.
And so that's also...
So...
There's a quick time, unless there's anything else, I will accept a motion to adjourn. Yes.
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 I put the motion forward.
Oh, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Please say aye. Thank you.
You can turn your mic around.